Good evening, folks, and welcome to the May 6, 2014, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. We'll call the meeting to order at this time. And we'll begin as usual with an invocation. And at this time, we're going to have a moment of silence for Mr. David Boone, who passed away on April the 27th. And David was elected terms of office to the Board of Iredell County Commissioners from '92 to '96, '96 to '98, and served from 2012 to his death on April the 27th. His term would have ended in 2016. He served as the vice chairman of this board from 1992 to 1996. And we'll have a moment of prayer, a moment of silence, excuse me, in memory of David Boone. Then we'll have our invocation. And I believe Commissioner Griffith would like to share a few remarks in regard to David Boone at the end of the invocation. If you would bow for a moment of silence, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to approach you. We realize the price that was paid, which affords our ability and opportunity to do that. And this evening, we have remembered in silence our friend David Boone. Many of the characteristics, a lot of people did not understand about David, but he was a modest man. And if you serve on this board long enough, you begin to know the people you serve with very well. And you talk to them about some of the most private things in their life and some of their closest beliefs. And through this prayer, I will testify of the faith of David Boone. But as usual, in a matter of, as in other matters, even in the matter of faith, David had a lot of knowledge that he wanted to share with you about it. David was a pretty good theologian. And I thank you for the revelation you gave into that, and I thank you for the parts of it you shared with me. This evening, we lift up this family to you, that you would encourage them. It's got to be, being a parent myself, got to be one of the most difficult things you'd ever do is to bury your own child. Ms. Clareman, Mr. Vestry, I pray you would comfort them as well as his brothers. I have had the opportunity through 19 years to serve with some of the finest people I've ever known. Different personalities, none of whom ever suffered from low self-esteem, but they were good people. They are honorable people, who at times made mistakes. Their desire to serve was admirable by all of them, and I thank you for them. I thank you for the better person they've made me, and the better place they've made this county. And David is no exception to that. And I pray tonight, as we go about these affairs, we do it in honor to you. That we remember the example of David and his faithful stewardship. We would follow that example. And having followed it, we would please you and serve the people of this county well. And we ask these things in your name. Amen.
At this point, I believe Commissioner Griffith has a few words to say.
Well, in honor of Commissioner Boone this evening, I will be casting a no vote on the adoption of the minutes, just to honor him one more time. In this past week, this community buried a great man, Commissioner David Boone. He was a loyal friend. He was a staunch conservative. He was my closest ally, and he truly wanted to help this community. I thought about David this week, and I'm quite certain that when he got to heaven, he was surprised that liberals would have made it in. And I'm sure he's had quite a few discussions with God about it, and I'm confident he lost every argument. His great mind and analytical thought process will be truly missed by this board. And while we may, we'll find someone to fill his seat, we will never find anyone to fill his shoes. Just say rest in peace. And I apologize for the tears. Thank you.
That's fine. We understand. Let's rise and join together in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, God and God, and freedom and liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, do you have any adjustments coming for this agenda from yourself or any member of the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, there are no changes from the staff.
Okay. If you would permit me to offer one that I didn't discuss with you earlier. I'm not going to horn in on the county manager's report. I would like to make a couple of comments of Moody's report back to us as far as our credit standing, if I could. Okay. Are there any other adjustments from any member of the board? Hearing none, I move we adopt this agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, one.
I forgot.
Yeah, I'll remind you.
Very fitting, yes. Okay. We're pleased this evening to, under presentation of special recognitions and awards, present a retirement plaque to David Henson from Environmental Health. David, if you would come forward, we'd like to present you with this.
Yeah. I want to apologize. I forgot that I'd have to come out from behind the bench and make this presentation, so I've got my tennis shoes on. I came in fresh from the campaign trail. John, I'd really appreciate if you'd make no mention of that in the paper in the morning. I present this plaque on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and all of Iredell County to David Henson in appreciation for your years of dedicated service to Iredell County. Having served on the Health Board for a while now, I came to know this man more personally. And let me assure you, he was a dedicated public servant. When I had to call upon him with a constituent complaint, he responded faithfully and quickly as anyone could expect, and I gained a great deal of admiration. He ran a very good department, and he was always professional and very knowledgeable in his tech, in the techniques of environmental health. And how many years you have in, David?
Thirty-four here.
Thirty-four.
All total, thirty-five and a half.
Thirty-five. All right. Well, we were glad we had you for 34 years, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And it's mandatory that you make at least a two-minute speech.
Well, I'm sorry. I don't know if I have that much in me, but it was my honor to serve. And good Lord bless me with good health and the ability to do that. And I'm very thankful for all the people that I met. I did make everyone happy on the journey, but I always tried to be fair and tried to be professional. And if nothing else, I hope that people will understand and remember me for that. So, thank you very much.
We have information provided by ICATS regarding the changes in funding caused by the urban-rural split. And Mr. Stackleather is with us this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The handouts you were given several weeks ago, and I apologize for not being here at the last meeting, I had some personal stuff come up. I appreciate you guys working with me on that. It basically lays out the different funding sources and how they're going to change. They're going to change because in 2010, the census designated part of Iredell County is an urban service area, same reason that we have to be part of the MPO. It didn't come into effect, it's not going to start to affect us until July 1st, because we've been spending old money. We've been spending money that was under an act called Safety Lou that was started in 2006. We're going to start to spend money under MAP-21 starting July 1st, 2014. So, that's why the effects are going to occur next year. The biggest impact it's going to have, as far as the citizens and the customers that use ICATS is concerned, if you're under the age of 60 and you live within the urban area as designated by the census, there are not going to be transportation options available in Troutman, potentially in Statesville. Mooresville does fund a fixed route, so some of the folks who live in Mooresville will be able to use that fixed route. The, I have presented something to the city manager of the city of Statesville to ask their board to maybe fund a route that we currently have in Statesville, that if they don't fund, the funding will go away. But that would provide something on Monday and Friday for those folks. We've worked diligently to try to cover as many people as we can with the changes. We've worked with the council on aging to cover any seniors that are going to lose funding, and it's going to shift to them. It will allow some more fun, or transportation opportunities for residents in the rural section. And we're going to be able to leverage some money in the future through the MPO or through CATS, through some other federal funding called 5307 to help offset some of the loss that we're going to have. But I'm not going to go through them each specifically. I've tried to lay it out as clearly as I can. I know you all have a pretty busy agenda tonight, but I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that y'all may have.
But as far as the rural areas, there's no impact on that?
The rural areas will have no negative impact. As a matter of fact, they will probably see more service. 5310, we're still going to get the same amount of money, we're just going to be able to do more trips in the rural part of the county.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? There's no?
Just, at this point, would you say, at least in the more urban, that they should anticipate that we're going to probably see some reduction, but not an elimination, in the number of routes?
The demand response service that we provide in the urban area, it won't go away totally. If you're riding under one of these grant funding sources, it will. So, for instance, Medicaid is a good example. That won't be impacted at all here.
Right.
But the grant funding that's in town, especially 5310, which covers elderly and disabled individuals, will no longer be eligible in the urban area. Having said that, I'm hoping that when we get past a year, we're going to find some funding to pick that up. CATS gets some 5310 funding, and the hope is that that funding will be able to come in and cover some of the costs that we've had. In the past, CATS has just sent that money to the state. So, they're going to go through the MPO and have a call for projects. And where that's going to impact us is with the, if you remember, the COG came and asked for approval to go for a 5310 grant, they will probably seek that through the MPO in the future. We will directly compete with them, and we'll need those funds at that time, for sure.
Okay.
The only other thing I would like to point out, down the road, and the state hasn't given us any guidance on when this will occur, we will have some cuts in funding to our administrative and capital grants, but that could be, at the earliest, it would be fiscal year '16, and they're not really sure when it's going to occur. So...
Okay. So, no action taken, just a point of information?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For sure. Okay. This time, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in regards to a request from the North Carolina Charter Educational Foundation Incorporated to approve tax incentive bond financing for the North Carolina Charter Education Foundation Incorporated. And, Mr. Smith, you know who's going to present this?
I'm actually going to ask Mr. Pope if he would give an introduction.
Mr. Chairman, the North Carolina Charter Educational Foundation Incorporated operates a charter school known as Langtree. They propose to erect some facilities, to acquire some property and erect and equip some facilities. It may cost as much as $20 million, and they want to borrow the money on a tax-favored basis. As a nonprofit, they are eligible to do that. One of the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code, though, is that the county commissioners of the county in which these nonprofits are located hold a public hearing to give the public an opportunity to have any input they might have with regard to the issuance of the bonds. I, when I initially saw this, my concern was whether the county would be deemed to have issued these bonds or have its credit or reputation on the line. I did as much reading as I could, and then resorted to calling Bond Counsel, Kristin Binko with Womacarlyle, who served as county bond counsel. And she walked me through this and helped me determine that, in fact, there is no pledge of the county's taxing authority or faith and credit in any way. All we're doing is facilitating, having a public hearing, giving the public an opportunity to participate. I did ask Bond Counsel for Langtree to bold that portion of the notice. It says that the county's faith and credit is not pledged, and you'll see that somewhere in there.
Page two. Contact.
Yeah, on page two, you'll see that it's in bold print, that the, "In no event shall Iredell County, the state of North Carolina, or any political subdivision be liable for such bonds, nor shall the bonds constitute a debt of Iredell County, the state of North Carolina, or any political subdivision." And that will be in bold print on every one of the documents where it's appropriate. So, that, I tried to anticipate questions I thought you might ask, and I was pretty sure that would be one question that you'd have. I'm satisfied that the county has no exposure, not even reputational exposure. I think maybe that some people from the school are here. Would you come up and perhaps take a minute to tell the commissioners what the project is and give the public a chance to comment on whether they want to favor or oppose this?
My name is Brandon Lofton. I am an attorney with Robinson Bradshaw &amp; Henson in Charlotte, North Carolina, just down the road. And we are serving as bond counsel for this issue. It is, as mentioned by Mr. Pope, an obligation of the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin that is payable out of debt coming from the charter school, which is operated by the North Carolina Charter Educational Foundation. And I just want to reemphasize that it is not the county's debt. The county is in no way pledging its taxing power or in any way obligating itself to this debt. It's just a requirement under the Internal Revenue Code that the citizens of the county in which the school is located have an opportunity to come and voice any concerns or any opinions they may have about the project. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the school or about the financing itself.
Do you see any aspect to the execution of these bonds, as far as their sale, the preparation of any paperwork, where the county would incur any expense at all related to them?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
If I could, I'm going to ask a few questions. Some I know the answer to, but I think these were some of the questions that we asked when other bonds were presented before the board, where we were told that the county had no exposure and we chose not to do them. And I think we should just kind of go through some of that again so that people understand a bit of the differences. Okay? And just as a point of clarification, you know, the word Langtree is on a lot of different businesses now, and we're talking about the charter school, not the commercial development, just so everybody knows. Like some of these other incentive bonds or development bonds, they say that we're not on the hook if, or the county isn't liable to make payments if the borrowers default or can't make the payments. But at one point in time, and you used the word reputation in your briefing to us, but I remember at one time you had a concern about reputational taint if some of these other development bonds failed. Here recently, a charter school in Charlotte did fail. Can you, can either of y'all explain how if the charter school, and I'm not trying to disparage the charter school, but just for the record, can you explain why if any charter school that we allow to use this, or go through this process in the county, if they borrow money and they were to default, that the county would not have reputational taint?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that question. These bonds will in no way be connected with the county. They will not be marketed as being connected with the county at all. They will be publicly offered as bonds of the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin, payable solely from the revenues from the North Carolina Charter Educational Foundation. The only connection that the county has is the fact that the school is located in Iredell County. But in no way will the county name be on the marketing material as it being an obligation of the county or in any way connected with the county.
It's my understanding that Iredell County government is not even named on it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. When the money is borrowed and payments are being made, the school owns the building, or, excuse me, if, excuse me, let me rephrase the question. If the, if the bond has not been paid, and for whatever reason, any charter school that uses this mechanism closes its doors, who owns the building?
The building in this bond deal is going to be owned by Red Apple LLC and leased to the charter school. So, Red Apple LLC and the charter school are borrowing the money from the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin.
So, who comes and takes the keys to the building?
Right. So, if there is a default on the debt, then the bondholders would foreclose on, there's a deed of trust on the property.
Okay, then they would auction the building off or sell the building, and then they get repaid.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Once the, if the bond is paid off and the charter school closes, who gets the building?
Red Apple LLC would retain ownership of the building.
Even if the bond's already been paid off?
That's correct. They're the entity that will own the building after the lease is up. The lease is longer than the useful life of the building, but theoretically, after the bonds are paid off and after the useful life has expired and the lease expires, then Red Apple LLC will retain ownership of the building.
Excuse me, I think you're asking, what happens if Red Apple will come to default?
No. What happens if, all of a sudden, the charter school decides they don't want to be, you know, for whatever reason, parents decide not to put their children there, teachers decide not to work there, whatever, if they decide they're not going to be a school anymore, then what happens to the building? If the, if the bond has been paid off and the building's been paid off?
The school is a 501(c)(3) organization, isn't it?
That's correct. The school is a 501(c)(3).
That means that upon dissolution, its assets have to be distributed to another 501(c)(3) organization, providing the same mission.
Okay. So, does another charter school get the building, or does Red Apple get the building?
Red Apple is the owner of the building.
Okay. All right. So, this is just a way of financing it for Red Apple, and when it's paid off, they own it, the school doesn't own it?
That's correct. The school has a long-term lease on the building, again, longer than the useful life of the building, but Red Apple retains ownership of the property and the land.
Thank you very much.
Will any of these bonds have to pass through the county at all?
No.
Okay. So, once we're done, we're done. If we approve this, we're done.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
One more. This is just a technicality that the IRS requires, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? If you would, come forth and state your name for the record, please. Hearing none, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to turn the first two items over to Jane Murray, our Health Director. They're both requests from the Health Department. First is approval of additions to the clinical services fee schedule, and the second is approval for a tobacco-free zone policy and procedure.
Okay. Good evening. The first order of business is our walk-in lab services program that continues to do extremely well, and we bring new fees to you when providers send clients to us and need these tests provided. And so far, I think this is a cash-only program. We generated around $20,000, and we just started offering the service in Mooresville, so that'll be open to the citizens there. So, tonight, we just need your approval for these additional fees.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Murray? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The second item for business is an administrative policy that was developed at the Health Department in June of 2010, based upon a public health accreditation requirement. And we're preparing for our re-accreditation this fall, and in going through the standards, we realize that though this was an administrative policy, it needed to go before the Board of Health and ultimately the Board of Commissioners as the owner of the three buildings that it impacts. And it is tobacco-free 50 feet at all three buildings that have public health services, which includes our building on Turnersburg, the Government Center South, and Mooresville, and the Building Standards Center in Statesville because of environmental health. And that is, prohibits any tobacco product within 50 feet. And we've been doing this for four years. The signs have been posted. Occasionally, we do have to say something typically to a visitor and make them aware of that, and they'll move a little bit further and they'll keep on smoking. But we need formal approval so that we'll be compliant with that accreditation standard.
Okay. Any questions?
If I'm standing at the front door of the Health Department, where does the 50 feet put me?
You would probably be where that convenience, our front door on Turnersburg.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be probably through the parking lot. And most of the time, the smoking that we have there is not there, it's in the back, and it's on the side, the property that's rented. But people will go to that convenience store.
50 feet, is that statute? Where did that come from?
Mm-hmm. That's in our public health accreditation. In fact, the standard, I think, is 30.10. What we're seeing, though, honestly, the trend in public health is tobacco-free in all government buildings and all property and vehicles. But right now, we're here, and we hope down the road to be able to work with the county leaders to look at, you know, possible, what else can be done in regards to preventing tobacco use.
I certainly hope we don't go to regulating people smoking in their cars. I'm not a smoker, but I mean, at some point, we've got to stop.
Oh, that's right. Well, no, not their personal vehicles. No.
Okay. Any other questions? Not. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next two items are C and D, and those are both requests from our Fire and Emergency Services Coordinator. The first is for approval of eight rescue squad agreements. The first is for approval of eight rescue squad agreements, and the second is to adopt the North Carolina Rescue and EMS standards and definitions. And David Salibi will make that request.
Mr. Salibi, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, before we get started, I'd like to maybe recognize a few folks and bring them up, if that's okay?
Sure.
And these folks will, are representing their rescue districts, and in alphabetical order of the districts, first of all is the Iredelle Rescue, Chief Brian Niblock, and Chairman of the Board, Joe Blevins. Gentlemen, if you would, just start here and just kind of circle around, we've got quite a few. Lake Norman Fire and Rescue is at Disney World, so they're enjoying themselves at Disney World tonight. Mooresville Fire, the town of Mooresville Fire and Rescue, Chief Kirk Veen, Town of Mooresville Commissioner-at-Large, David Cobble. Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department Assistant Chief, Steve Robbins. North Iredelle Rescue, Chief David Cook, Deputy Chief Rowdy Cox, Chairman of the Board Directors, Richard Reniger, Secretary of Treasury of Board Directors, Kathy Mills. Shepherds Fire and Rescue, Chief Kelly Robinson. South Iredelle Volunteer Fire Department, Chief Brian Weatherman, Chairman of the Board Directors, Gary Stires. Troutman Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue, Fire Chief Alan Church, Rescue Chief Tom Billig, Chairman of the Board, Keith Troutman. I think we've emptied the room. I would also like, before I get started, and I have just a brief comment, our staff has worked very, very hard, and I'd like to recognize Ron Smith, our County Manager, Susan Robinson, Director of Finance, Lisa Valdez, who is our Associate County Attorney, David Martin, Director of Emergency Management and Communications, and David Klor, Director of EMS. All these folks were instrumental in crafting what you have before you begin your board package. Over the past year, Iredelle County staff has worked with South Iredelle, Lake Norman, Shepherds, and Mountmore Volunteer Fire Departments to create rescue districts and provide rescue services within their existing fire districts. With Board of Commissioner approval, the town of Mooresville began providing rescue services within their municipal boundaries in May of 2011. Troutman, Iredelle, and North Iredelle Rescue squads have been providing rescue services in their rescue districts since, in the 1960s and maybe in the 1970s, some started, and it was way before me. All eight of these rescue squads have provided excellent service to our county, superb customer service or citizen service without any operating agreement or service contract. Over the past five months, all eight of these rescue organizations represented here tonight have worked with the county staff to create the agreement before you. The action being requested tonight is from the Board of Commissioners is to approve rescue service agreements for each of the organizations. Each of these organizations also understand without an approved service agreement, the county will not be providing funding after June 30, 2014. All their agreements are signed and ready for approval by the board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions, Mr. Salibi, or any of these folks gathered in front of us?
I'd like to make a comment that when I first came on the board, I heard concerns from the rescue squad that there were no contracts. And I want to thank all of you for your patience as we've worked through this process. I know it has not been easy, and I hope that tonight you'll be provided with a level of comfort that even if the faces on this board change, which inevitably they will, that you'll have this assurance of a contract from the county, and with a contract comes funding. And we appreciate the work that you guys do every day. You do all the time without thanks, and it has been a long journey to get here, and I'm glad that we've arrived here, and thank you for working with us to make it happen. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Got a question. If there's a wreck on the interstate, what's going to happen right now? Everybody's here. No, I would, if I can just make the comment that, you know, I think this, this, this board has spent a lot of time trying to understand, you know, what's the differences and how do we, how do we differentiate who does what between fire and rescue? And, and even within rescue, there's the ambulance service and different levels of rescue. It's been a real educational process to us, and I would say that, that, that learning about that has increased our awareness of the incredible number of additional hours that somebody who usually starts as a firefighter has to, the training that they have to do and the certifications they have to do to get certified for doing rescue. And, and that is a direct benefit to all the, you know, to all the citizens of the county. So thank, thank you. I hope that this provides some stability, and, and I think it's the intent of the board that we don't plan to change the number of rescue squads nor the number of fire departments at this point who seek to become rescue squads, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's where we stand, and thank you.
Any other comments? I'll say a couple. I know word gets around of commitments that have been made by this board, individual of this board. Let me say this, one thing I've always been proud of and really come to appreciate on this board is the willingness of people in the volunteer services of this, of this county that if their fellow citizens need them, they come. Following 9/11, I was asked to serve on a regional task force for Homeland Security, and I was amazed as, as we gathered together with people of other communities and they talked about the friction in their community between various agencies who supplied those services. And a gentleman from the Department of Homeland Security was speaking, and I says, "We have a unique county. When we call our folks in emergency services, they come." And he says, "Well, you live in a very unique community." And I was very proud to be able to say with confidence and absolute truth that that was the case. Let me assure each one here, the decision to establish new rescue districts was not something initiated by this board. It was not something that we wanted to do. It was something because of changing demographics in the southern end of the county, we were compelled to do. Because you folks especially who live there know if, if a response agency is located in this, in downtown Mooresville, and they have to exit the city in either direction, they're going to drive through a minimum of three or four business districts and a dozen neighborhoods to get there. From a demographic standpoint, it was becoming unfeasible to rely upon one agency to do that. The town of Mooresville decided the best way to serve their citizens was begin to have first responder calls in the town of Mooresville. I have no quarrel with that. I think it was a service that was needed, and they felt compelled to do so to serve their citizens adequately. But then, that created a problem for the county. How would we get an emergency service agency from downtown Mooresville out into the county? And that's what prompted us to look for not just a more efficient way, but a more cost-effective way to deliver those services, and that's what compelled us to come up with a service district. So let me assure each one of you folks here who have your rescue service districts, there is no plan. There is no idea floating through anyone's head that I've heard expressed to create any more rescue service districts beyond this. Now, years from now, when Statesville looks like Mooresville, some other group of Board of Commissioners may feel compelled by the same demographic changes that were forced upon us to make that decision. I do not see that happening for some time. And these contracts should give you the assurance that you will be funded, and when we adopt these standards, I made the comment early on that they need to be an independent standards of what, what constitutes light and medium rescue so that you folks aren't operating by one definition, we're operating by another. What will be absolutely necessary in the future is for us to continue to monitor the standards required so that we can make adjustments to make sure we remain in compliance, and you have the resources, the personnel, and the equipment to respond to those according to those standards, and we'll make that commitment to you. And thank you again for your service to the people of this county, and I hope you leave here with a, with a confidence that this board has complete faith in your ability to provide these services and look to a long-term solution within, have no desire to alter the rescue service districts any further. Thank you. All right, so we're going to need to approve these. We can do all of these in one motion, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before the room empties, I would like for these folks to stay up here for this next piece, just in case you have questions, because the next part is more technical, and these guys can answer these questions if you have. This will be very brief. Your next agenda item deals with the, with the definitions and the standards of rescue services in Iredelle County. The North Carolina Association of Rescue and EMS is the organization which certifies and governs, governs, governs rescue squads in North Carolina. At the February 22, 14 Board of Commissioners winter retreat, the board asked for a formal adoption of the definitions of levels of rescue squad certifications, which were light, medium, and heavy. There are special technical levels of rescue certifications currently being used by some of our rescue squads in the county. In your board package, you were provided the definitions and requirements for light, medium, and heavy levels of rescue. The special technical rescue requirements are available tonight if you have any questions. The North Carolina Association of Rescue and EMS is the inspection organization referenced in the rescue service agreements previously presented. The action being requested tonight is a formal adoption of the North Carolina Association of Rescue and EMS definitions and requirements for rescue certifications in Iredelle County. Our rescue representatives are here to answer, answer any technical questions. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Salibi, or these folks gathered here?
I just remember at one point we talked that we weren't going to, we weren't going to paint ourselves into a fixed description, that we were going to let our description change if the state changed their description.
That is correct, and I, we have, that is stated, Lisa, in the agreements. As the state changes their standards, so does our, our standards.
Without action by this board?
Correct. That, that is in the service agreement.
Yes, sir. And, and right now, we are, we are up to speed on, I mean, there were a lot of equipment listed here. We're good to go. We've, we've met those requirements?
At, at the levels that they are currently certified, they have what they need. And then there are some that are technical levels, and they have what they need. In the service agreement, if we are to do anything any higher or at a technical level of rescue, the county and the squad will come into agreement, and then we will, we will adopt that and we will present that, and if the commissioners wish, we will fund that to increase that, or to increase the level of rescue or at a special technical level. But currently, everybody is up to speed, correct, boys, girls?
The one question I had is, as we go forward, I would assume, and we met, I can never remember his last name, is it Chet Hill?
Uh, no, Chet Hill's on the fire side. We met-
We can-
The rescue guy.
Okay.
No, no, Fox, Terry Fox.
Yeah. In our discussion with them, I came away with the understanding that when the standards are changed, there's usually some period of discussion, some period of recommendation, debate back and forth. So I'm assuming that before any substantive change as far as the equipment, training, or whatever necessary to meet the new definition of light, medium, or heavy, there's some period of time that would give us a lapse of time so that we could make sure that the money was available. Is that a reasonable assumption? They don't-
I believe it is. I'll, I'll, these guys have been involved in the changes, so I, I think nodding is yes.
Is that pretty much the case?
Yes.
We're going to depend on you guys, though, if something's brewing and there's going to be a change requiring new equipment or additional funding to give us advance notice of that so we can make sure the money would be available for you.
They are great teachers. They've taught me a lot.
Okay. All right, so-
We're good.
We'll just have that understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the contract that's determined.
Okay, we have a motion to approve these standards and definitions from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, folks.
Now we'll empty the room. Before I introduce item E, there was one person that was not recognized by David, and that is David. I, I would like to recognize and thank Mr. Salibi for all of his work. I am- I, I think he certainly deserves it. Item E is a request from David Klor, our EMS Director, for approval of Budget Amendment Number 34 to transfer $275,000 from EMS Specialty Services to pay off their startup loan.
Hey, good evening. As y'all, most of y'all remember, in 2011, around December 2011, we got put in kind of a bind with an outgoing non-emergency agency that was providing our non-emergency transports, decided to shut down services. We had another one that was applying to be able to do that but couldn't get the qualifications or the requirements that the county requested in process. The board at that time authorized me to put together a plan of action of how we could provide those services for you. In a short period of time, we did come up with a very sustainable plan. We've had a few hiccups along the way, but I'm happy to announce today that we're here to pay off the initial loan about two years, two and a half years ahead of schedule.
Wow. Very good.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions on that that you'd like.
Mr. Klor, let me say this. This board fully understood the hardship that we put you and your staff in when we instituted this. We realized there was a, there was going to be a time period before you could hire people on and get them action-
Yes, sir.
-and up and moving to perform this facility, and a lot of your folks really went to the wall to make this thing work.
Yes, they did. They stepped up.
We'd appreciate if you'd communicate that to them.
Incredibly well.
And we appreciate the good stewardship of, of you and the county manager and the county finance director in paying this thing off in advance and reassure you of our commitment that the money generated from this, this will be used to improve capital operations in your budget, that you will earn your way on capital projects that won't be subsidized from the general fund. So the next time the economy turns south, there should be some money available and you won't be, your folks won't be riding around in some ambulances that are in the greatest- great issue. But we appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, we thank you for your help and support.
We applaud you for that. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the request is to transfer $275,000 from EMS Specialty Services to pay off the loan. Floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 34.
Okay, motion to approve from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Item F is a request from Susan Robertson, Finance Director, to approve a project ordinance for West Iredale High School's HVAC project.
I think once before I promised I'd never mention Redleg again, but one thing that I had not had the Board do was approve a project ordinance for the financing piece and also for the $303,000 that Iredale State's Schools is gonna contribute to the project. It's my understanding the project will be bid before too much longer with thoughts to get, or they may be already out on the street, but the thoughts to get started as soon as school is out.
Any questions, Ms. Robertson? Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
G is a request for approval of the April 15, 2014 minutes.
Okay. If there are no corrections, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, we have one announcement. The Nursing Home Advisory Board, we have two announcements. Connect Consortium with Central Indiana Council of Governments, one announcement. Now we come to appointments to boards and commissions. I Care Incorporated, we have one appointment. Floor's open for nominations.
Recommend Carolyn Gray.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move to close the floor to nominations and appoint Carolyn Gray by our commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any unfinished business? We have a public comment here tonight. Any new business? County Manager's report. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to mention the credit?
Yeah, let me do that. I won't be as long-winded as you are. You've got more to talk about than I do. We recently got a notice from Moody's Investor Service as far as their outlook as far as the county's debt. And this is in regard to outstanding $41.3 million in GO and $142.1 million in COPS debt. They have changed their outlook, although the bond rating remains the same, they've changed their outlook from stable to positive. They mentioned a few things in here, in this report, in regard to this. Some of the strengths of Iredale County are sizable tax base bending fitting from close proximity to the growing Charlotte MSA. Excuse me. Another strength is budgeting, conservative budgeting practices resulting in increased physical flexibility. Challenges that we have are above-average employment volatility and a moderate reliance on unpredictable sales tax revenues. The report goes on, and it mentions several things that the Board has done. And one of them is, or a couple of them are, the conservative budgeting practices, but it also specifically makes a mention, it phrases it differently, but it says the budgetary discipline that we have maintained. We conservatively budget revenue projections, we conservatively budget expenditures, we maintain well within the limits of those, and we protect the integrity of our fund balance. And this report applauds us for that. One thing that they do mention in this report is the administrative policy of maintaining an 18% fund balance. This was a discussion we had probably three years ago now. And although it's never formalized, it pretty much came to working philosophy of this board that the county fund balance should remain above 18%. This report is an endorsement of that, if you read it in its entirety. And I just wanna point that out. I think it's an endorsement of the policies of this board, quite frankly, through these difficult economic times. And it is endorsement of the execution of these policies by all of the county staff. So it's very gratifying to see that. They have a word of caution and a word of encouragement. What can make the rating go up? Strengthening of the tax base and demographic profile to levels consistent with a AA1 rating category. I did a little bit of research on that, folks. One of the challenges that Iredale County has is the difference in per capita income in different parts of the county. And this is what they're concerned about. They would like to see more uniformity in the per capita income across the county. Counties who enjoy this AA1 rating category typically have that. To some degree, we like that. So we're working on economic development strategies for particularly the State's full area. Morsell pretty much has what we're talking about in place. Some of this will be impacted by the new policies coming forth, but to a large degree, they're already in place in Morsell. What they're telling us, we need to make, demographically, we need to make the rest of the county look more like Morsell as far as per capita income. And that will greatly contribute to an increase in the rating. The maintenance of the currently healthy reserve and liquidity. I'll say this, I won't take any credit for myself. I wanna thank my fellow Commissioners over the last four or five years for the difficult decisions that they have made. I wanna thank the staff for the faithful execution of those decisions and those policies because it says the maintenance of currently healthy reserve and liquidity. That is only possible, folks, by developing good policy and the faithful execution of those policies. And this cannot be in any way interpreted as a political campaign speech because if you look at the clock, the polls closed 30 minutes ago. This is just the statement of fact from an independent rating agency. And in simple talk, they're bragging on us pretty well. And I think this board and our staff is to be congratulated. What could make the rating go down? Ongoing structural imbalance resulting in draws on reserves. What they're telling us, you've done a good job of remaining liquid and having cash in the bank. Don't mess with it. Keep those fund balances high and your reserves high. Material, another, what could make the rating go down? Another thing's material declines in tax base and demographic profile. We gotta continue to aggressively recruit industry and develop strategies to do that. And we have to close the difference in the per capita demographic income. Finally, one of the things that could make the rating go down is significant new debt. We have to be careful, folks, when we can, the county manager's gonna present a budget here in a few minutes, and he's gonna tell you how much property taxes are going up, and he's gonna tell you how much sales taxes are going up. There's a significant difference in the rate of increase in property tax revenues in this county and sales tax increases. And we have to be careful about significant new debt because that debt, to a largely degree, without a significant rate increase in the property tax, a good portion of it's gonna be paid for with sales tax revenues. And I still think that this economy, if there is a recovery going on, I think it is tepid at best and highly volatile because there's too much focus put on creating demand and not enough effort placed on increasing supply in this economy. And it was the emphasis on the supply in the 80s, in the mid 90s to mid 2000s that created the economic boom we experienced. So I wanna congratulate my fellow Commissioners and our staff for their great wisdom and their faithfulness in executing of the policies. So if anybody wants to question the policies and the execution of those policies by this board and this staff, they got some pretty heavyweight people to argue with, with Moody's. And I congratulate you and thank you for all of that. Thank you very much.
Can I add one comment to that?
Yes, sir.
You know, a lot of people have heard stories of when different government departments or agencies, right at the end of their budget year, they blow through their money to spend it because if you don't use it, you'll lose it. And we've all heard that. And one of the great frustrations of being a county commissioner is that a lot of times people have assumed that Iredale County functioned as the worst examples of dysfunctional government in other states and at other levels, state and federal levels. It's never been, it's, well, since I've been on the board and I assumed before because it was, this board was well-led long before I came on, it was never the policy of the departments to blow their budgets. And what most people, I think, don't know is that when a department underspends their budget, which most of them try to do, that money is returned and basically goes to fund balance at the end of the year. So part of our, part of the reason why we have a healthy fund balance, part of it is because of our board actions where that was something that was intentional to do, but was also due to very good leadership at the department head level and really by many other staff members to spend the least amount of money and get the most amount of value. And at the end of the year, they weren't afraid to turn some money back in and help the citizens. So even though the chairman thanked us and thanked the staff, I wanted people to understand how that happens. And in no small way can we, can the county, or, excuse me, the county employees share a great deal of the credit for what was in that report. And I just wanted to make sure that the public understood why they were, why or how they made that happen. So, sorry for not being very eloquent with it, but I think you get the point. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Smith, I think we're through talking. It's your turn.
Before I get into the budget, I wanna point you to something that was sitting in front of you, a memo. We've had a lot more activity from a land use perspective here recently, more rezonings over the last several months than we'd had in the last several years. And there's been a lot of question, or there've been a lot of questions dealing with conditional zoning and things of that nature. And based on that, I talked with Matthew Todd and asked Matthew to kind of put together something for you to read at your leisure, talking about conditional zoning and talking about some of the changes we made to our land development code that might answer some of those questions that came up. So don't expect any questions tonight, but I just wanted to let you know that that's there. And if you have any questions, Matthew is more than willing to try and answer those. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and give the budget message for this year. Just to let you know, I'm gonna do this just a little differently. I took a different approach to putting this message together. We get a lot of questions, and I know you all do as well, about the budget and about why certain things are the way they are. And through this message, I know in a five-page document, I can't answer every question, but I tried to educate as much as explain this budget. And you all are veterans of this, so a lot of the education is not really for you, but it is for the public because this is part of the budget package. So Beth is going to go through several slides as I talk. I'm not gonna talk about those, but they are germane to the discussion and they are included in the budget message that you have waiting for you downstairs. I began the process of developing the FY 2015 budget with great anticipation. If you travel around the southern end of the county, you see telltale signs of a strong economy. Housing starts abound, new retail stores are under construction, and heavy traffic around commercial centers are indicators of citizens spending money and contributing to the local economy. But as the budget process began, I quickly found out that this was not exactly the case. Development is increasing, although we are not seeing a significant increase in the tax base. Sales tax revenues are up, however, such a cyclical funding source is unreliable and easily influenced. And the cost of providing quality services to our residents, the taxpayers of this county, continues to rise. So my enthusiasm was dampened, and we got to work on a stable, low-growth budget proposal for your review and hopefully approval. Fiscal year 2014 brought us major accomplishments and equally major concerns. Over this last year, we have found efficiencies in the merging of our development departments, consolidated a significant amount of debt, which will save the county over $2.5 million over the next 10 years, put in place contracts and funding formulas for all the rescue squads, and paid for the startup loan of EMS Specialty Services back to the general fund two years early. I really am glad you approved those things. At the same time, we dealt with the adverse effects of NCFAST in social services and struggled with the rising costs of health insurance, both of which will continue as long-term issues that need attention. All in all, fiscal year 2015 will likely be similar to 2014. There are few major changes from this year's budget, other than a proposed increase to the schools, increases to our health insurance fund, and dedicating a significant amount toward the future and long-term needs. Major revenues for fiscal year 2015 are projected to be relatively flat. Total real property values are expected to increase by 1.41%, while personal property values are projected to drop by 10.45%. The decrease can be attributed to the changeover in the motor vehicle tax collections and significant changes in our personal property tax base based on depreciation and the loss of valuable property. The net effect is that the total ad valorem value is expected to decrease by just over $160 million, accounting for $388,000 less in tax revenue. Conversely, this year, we have seen strong rebound in our sales tax revenues. Today, we find a 7%, around 7% increase over this same time last year. And this is a good sign, and based on this, we are forecasting a 15% increase in sales tax revenues over this year's budgeted amount. So that's what we budgeted for FY 14. Although this is an increase, it must be noted that sales tax revenues account for roughly 18% of our overall revenues, while the property tax amounts to over 60%. So although we're seeing significant increases in sales tax revenues, they have a lesser impact on the overall revenue picture than the property tax. I'm proposing a 2% increase over this last year's budget. This growth is lower than recent years as we have steadily come back from serious cutbacks in fiscal year 2010. The majority of the expenditure increases are found in several areas, some within our control and some not. Iredale County's budget is usually heavily influenced by contributions to education, public safety, and human services. These three categories comprise over 84% of the general fund budget. Therefore, significant requests by these agencies can have a major effect on operations. We strive to keep the budget balanced from an equity perspective and keep those percentages relatively stable year to year. This year is no exception, with those three categories rising by under 1% collectively. Next year, the county is projected to see an 18% increase in the cost of our health insurance. We plan to cover this by, this increase through an 18% increase in our county contribution while also charging an 18% increase in the premiums for all but individual coverage for all but individual coverage-only employees. We are taking actions to drive these costs down, but that's a long-term fix. Education spending comprises over forty-four percent of the general fund budget. This year, I'm proposing an overall increase of 2.61 percent, or almost 1.4 million, to the Iredale Statesville schools. This includes an increase to the current expense budget of over $760,000, bringing their per pupil rate up from thirteen, $1,378 to $1,425. The same rate will also apply to the ma, the same per pupil rate will also apply to the Mooresville graded school district, however, it will result in a 5.43 percent increase in current expense funding due to an increase in their students. Iredale Statesville has actually lost students, or is projected to. The overall increase to Mooresville graded is 1.69 percent, or just over $237,000. The overall increase to Mitchell Community College will be over $109,000, or 2.38 percent. Spending on education has continued to stay consistent as a percentage of the overall budget over the last five years. And as that graph shows, you can see that it's basically, basically mirrored our, our budget. In two thousand fifteen, I'm proposing an up to three percent merit-based increase for employees. This will be administered at the time of their yearly evaluation and will be a permanent increase in their salary. We continue to lose, we continue to lose good, experienced people and we need to make every effort possible to keep them. Combined with an increasing turnover rate and the cost of training and equipping new employees makes this a sound decision. Through this budget process, we received requests for over twenty new employees. Of that number, I recommended adding five full-time positions in the general fund departments and three in our non-general fund departments of solid waste and ICATS. For the most part, the recommended positions are either planned to pay for themselves or are essential to the completion of necessary services. We continuously strive to find ways not to expand the workforce, however, sometimes it makes sense to do so. The full-time positions recommended in the budget proposal include two in the Department of Social Services to deal with the conversion of Medicaid programs into NCFAST, one in tax administration to assist both with the upcoming revow and as a crossover between assessment and collections, one bailiff at the Mooresville office of the sheriff, and a full-time veterinary position at Animal Services and Control. This would actually offset other positions. The non-general fund positions will assist ICATS in complying with new federal standards and in solid waste, those positions are geared towards succession planning. We have a huge wave of individuals in solid waste that are all, they're retiring in waves and all of their experience is going with them. And we'll talk more about that. Aside from the costs associated with education and employees, facilities can be of the, one of the largest expenditures in our budget. In the coming year, I'm proposing to add just over $200,000 to our building maintenance fund, which covers most of the major repairs and renovations for the county's facilities. In addition, I'm proposing we include $250,000 in a future capital project fund to begin building our reserves for future capital needs. Admittedly, some of the recommended cuts were made to offset future needs for capital improvements or in anticipation of future spending, hope, but hopefully, this approach will allow us to move forward without apprehension toward addressing future capital needs. Because of the slow growth pattern that is anticipated, I'm proposing we allocate 1.5 million to be directed to the fund balance for future needs that may not be able to be carried by natural revenue growth. 1.5 million basically off the top going towards the general, or towards fund balance in anticipation, in anticipation of large-scale needs, a jail, ECOM, something similar, whatever the board decides to do. But based on the growth pattern, we cannot support anything major without starting to save some of that money. If the board decides to move forward with the expansion of the jail, this could lessen the potential debt service it would take to fund that project. Preliminary estimates of the two thousand fifteen revow indicate that the property tax base will continue to grow at only a minimal rate. The county's development departments are not seeing a significant amount of growth of a noteworthy scale to break the overall slow growth pattern. Home values from Statesville North are remaining stagnant, which offsets the growth somewhat in the southern end. There are many entitled lots, meaning through the development process. In the Troutman area, however, according to the town, there is a five-to-seven-year build-out in those subdivisions. I feel the revenues will follow when more significant development begins to come out of the ground, but this new development will obviously bring its own issues when it does. Through this year's budget, we received over $169 million in requests, and of that number, $167,274,985 has been recommended for approval. I've tried to balance current needs with the, with the need to also prepare for the future. However, as we reproach budget amounts similar to previous years, it is possible that we've leveled out to some degree as our requests are not as high as last year and generally mirror our revenues. Based on the information in the preceding message and to complete my obligation under General Statute 195-11, I recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the proposed FY two thousand fifteen budget of $165,274,985. This will keep the current tax rate at 48.5 cents per hundred dollars in valuation and is based on a tax base of $20,946,200,000 with a collection rate of nine, 97.36 percent. The fund balance as of June 30th, two thousand fourteen is estimated to be at $39,093,018, which is 23.3 percent, three, seven percent of the recommended budget. And that concludes my budget message. I would be glad to answer any questions that you have. And if you have none, we have your budgets prepared for you and they are down in County Manager's conference room. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions, Mr. Smith?
Remind us for our first budget meeting.
Pardon me?
Remind us for our first budget meeting.
Thursday night.
Okay.
And we, we will provide dinner for you if you want to come at five o'clock.
Okay.
Five-thirty.
Thank you for your hard work, Mr. Smith, and all the department heads would appreciate it and look forward to getting to work on this thing and adopt it as soon as possible. There's nothing else to come to our attention this evening. I'm, I'll for a motion that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.